Obey the orders of the mayor or the city council and not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments while addressing the city council, which pursuant to council rules shall be considered disorderly. Any person who becomes disorderly or who fails to confine his or her comments to the identified subject or business shall be cautioned by the mayor and thereafter must conclude his or her remarks on the subject within the remaining designated time limit. Any speaker failing to comply as cautioned shall be barred from making any additional comments during the meeting and may be removed as necessary for the remainder of the meeting. Portions of the agenda at the times indicated by the chair during the meeting. With that, I would open up the public participation item in the agenda. Are there any members of the public that would like to come forward and address city council at this time?
I don't have a card.
It's okay. The card is just to help us follow up, so if you'd just announce your name for us for the record, please.
I sure will. My name is Thomas Yates. I live at Ten Kynite Place. I've been a resident of Palm Coast since 2015, and I have a problem with the street lighting. Some of you have received emails from me. On June 28th, the city activated the new streetlights on the western end of Belterra Road. At that time, during the activation, our life in Palm Coast has deteriorated. And the reason why it has deteriorated is just not simple light bleeding. This light is entering our home. It enters, it lights our lanai, it comes into our master bathroom, which is adjacent to the bedroom, it shines off our granite countertops, it even lights the cul-de-sac in front of our house, the second story of my neighbor's home. This is far beyond light bleeding, and I've gotten responses that it falls within engineering standards. I understand that, and that the light is installed on a horizontal plane. Well, if you stand at the western end of Belterra and you look east, you can see a lean of the light. And I'm asking for a common resolution to my problem. Mayor Alvin, I've sent you an email, councilman, oh, I'm sorry. I've sent an email to Councilman Branquino. I've been in discussions with city manager. So what I'm asking for is someone to come out and physically look at it, not go off engineering specifications, and help us resolve this problem so we can maintain our life in Palm Coast.
Thank you for your comment. City manager, you have the contact information? Very good. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
At the city council workshop, we discovered that, or the city discovered, that it would cost $392,000 to install the islands on Florida Park Drive to, it would help reduce the speed of traffic. But residents have constantly sort of talked about the speed is just one part of the equation that's wrong. The other part is the fumes and the noise of three million cars a year going through a residential area. So in a way, it's, the city doesn't want to spend all that much money on the islands, or they don't have that much money at present to spend on islands. So, but there is another options. The options are, you got speed humps, speed tables, speed cushions. And from the studies that have done traffic common analysis, those were the ones that reduced the volume the greatest. So this would be a good opportunity for the city to test, to see if that would reduce the volume of traffic that's going through Florida Park Drive. All kinds of scientific studies are out there that the breathing of traffic fumes can harm a child's life, I mean lungs, for their life. It can just do that. Also, the traffic noise can disturb their study habits to the point that they, they are not proficient in school the best way they can be. So all I'm doing is asking, please consider other options that will protect children, especially the children on Florida Park Drive. But the speed tables or speed humps or cushions would actually protect all residents, and it would reduce the amount of traffic that would go through Florida Park Drive. Noise is bad. Noise is every day, okay? Every night. I would challenge any city councilperson at nighttime, go visit a home on Florida Park Drive when the traffic is open and flowing, and tell me which bedroom you can stand in and not hear traffic noise. It's a good night, it's a good night's sleep. It's essential to help, according to doctors, it is. So do something, please, to help the residents of Florida Park Drive.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address city council at this time? Yes, ma'am. You okay?
I don't have a card in yet either. I'm Jan Markwitz. I live off of Cimarron Drive. I'm in this C-section, and there's a, I had a video that I sent to Virginia that I took on my little, on my phone. I ride a trike because I need that trike for stability for my exercise. That road is so busy, and I took it on the curve because that's the most dangerous part, I think. And we're trying to get a sidewalk or a bike lane just to help us a little bit, but it, this area has so many people who have either deliveries or lawn maintenance or anybody, and all the trucks don't really have anywhere to park, so when you're riding or driving, a trike is a wider little vehicle, so it takes a little more space. In Sunday's Daytona Beach Journal, I just wanted to read you a quick little article that, it talks about the dangers in our counties, Volusia and Flagler, and it said Volusia and Flagler counties reported 140 pedestrian deaths between 16 and 20 for an average of 4.25 deaths per 100,000 population. Compare that to the 3.22 dead walkers per 100,000 population recorded for the state as a whole, and know that Florida has the second highest pedestrian death in the country. So we want our county to not reflect that kind of danger on our roads for our citizens. And I know our little area has, I'm not even sure the numbers of people in our, on our street, but it's the only way in and out, and we do have a lot of walkers and bikers and pets that get walked along Cimarron, and we're hoping for some changes to help us feel a little more safe. But I hope you'll get a chance to take a look at the video because it's only, there's two little videos, and they're about one minute each, so just if you have a chance, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
At the last meeting here, the Parks and Recreation put the tunnels to towers as an annual event. I think that is fantastic, and I would like to comment and recognize the amazing amount of work in the background that the organizers did, that the, that the fire department did, law enforcement, Parks and Recreation. It came off, in my opinion, I mean, it was the first time you had it here, and it came off, in my opinion, as an amazing and extremely successful event, and I think that all the work in the background that went into putting it together should be recognized. And for just a moment, if you'll allow me, Mr. Finelli, you and your wife and your family are in my prayers.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any additional members of the public that would like to speak to city council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comments section of the meeting. Any comments from city councilmen? Okay, very good. Moving forward, we go to the minutes. I would look for a motion, motion for approval of the minutes of the city council dated July 5th, 2022. That was a business meeting. And July the 12th, 2022, that was a workshop meeting.
Motion to approve it.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, very good. Before we begin today with the city council business portion of the meeting, I want to take a moment to discuss city council processes relating to approval or denial of items presented to council at all business meetings. For each workshop, city council receives a comprehensive overview of each item. At that time, it is council's opportunity to provide opinions and ask questions on each item. Just as a reminder, items that are quasi-judicial in nature will require council to base their decisions on only what is presented at the scheduled public hearings conducted at the scheduled business meetings. The purpose of a business meeting is for council to review and weigh all the evidence and take action with decisions based on all information presented both at the prior workshop and today. So with that, I would ask council to read in the first ordinance, please.
Yes, this is item number two on the agenda. It's rezoning application number 5064 for the Seminole Point rezoning. This is the first reading of this ordinance. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map as established in section 2.06 of the city of Palm Coast Unified Land Development Code, amending the official zoning map for 67.69 acres of certain real property generally located at the intersection of US-1 and Seminole Woods Boulevard, and more particularly described in the attached exhibit A, to reconfigure the existing high-intensity commercial, COM3, and multifamily residential, MFR2, zoning districts, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. City council members, this is a quasi-judicial action, so if anybody's had any ex parte communications, please disclose them on the record now.
None.
None.
None whatsoever.
None.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. You have a summary presentation this morning, Mr. Tyner?
Thank you, Mayor. Ray Tyner, Deputy Chief Development Officer. Yes, Ms. Myers will have a presentation for this rezoning of this project. September of last year, city council did do a rezoning on this property from master plan development to a variety of different uses on the property. The applicant has requested another rezoning for this property to redistribute the lines, to readjust the zoning for this project. And following staff's presentation, the applicant is also here for a presentation as well, Mayor.
Good morning, Mayor, city council members. Jordan Myers, environmental planner, and I will proceed with the Seminole Point zoning map amendment presentation. So this is the site. You can see there are three parcels involved, or three lots in the red outline totaling 67.69 acres on the intersection of Seminole Woods Boulevard and US-1. Here is the existing Integro Woods apartment complex, if that gives you a better sense of where this is located. A little bit closer of a map, as Mr. Tyner mentioned, it was previously rezoned, changing from master plan development to the existing commercial 3 and MFR2. This is the future land use map. The entire property is mixed use, which allows for the commercial 3 and MFR2 zoning districts. This is the existing zoning map. You can see there's the COM3 here and COM3 down here, and then the rest of it, the dark brown, is MFR2 zoning district. So this is the existing. And this is the proposed. So you'll see this lot went from COM3 to multifamily residential 2, but then down here, the COM3 went from just being on US-1 to this entire corner of Seminole Woods and US-1. And I do have a side-by-side as well. So here you can see the difference between the existing and the proposed. This corner of high-intensity commercial got significantly bigger, and then just this lot up here, basically the COM3 moved from here to down here. That's why the definition, the rezoning was reconfigure. They're just moving it around. We'll go into the analysis based on 2.0505 of the Land Development Code. The proposed development must not be in conflict with or contrary to the public interest. Because we're just redistributing zoning on the property, it's not in conflict or contrary to the public interest. MFR2 and COM3 are already existing on the property. We're just relocating where they are on those parcels. Proposed development must be consistent with the comprehensive plan and provisions of the Land Development Code. This request is consistent with a few of the following policies. Chapter 1, future land use element, preserve the character of residential communities. So since there is already an apartment complex right next door, and again, we're just moving around the existing zoning on the property, it's not in conflict to that. Future land use designation, south permit zone, permit zoning districts listed and generally described in the following table, so that's saying, under mixed use, future land use, you could have both MFR2 and COM3. And land use patterns will be required to be efficient and not disproportionately increase the cost of providing and maintaining public facilities. Again, all the public facilities are available in the area. Must not impose a significant financial liability or hardship for the city. As mentioned, all the public infrastructure is there, and any extensions that would need to be made would be at the cost of the developer. The proposed development must not create an unreasonable hazard or nuisance or constitute a threat to the general health, welfare, or safety of the city's inhabitants. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the neighborhood. As previously said, we're just reconfiguring what's already on site. The proposed development must comply with all other applicable local, state, and federal laws, statutes, ordinances, regulations, or codes. As this property continues through the development process, they will have to comply with all regulations of Land Development Code. Any wetland impacts will need to be permitted and everything like that. Whether it is consistent with all adopted elements of the comprehensive plan and whether it furthers the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, as noted previously in the analysis prepared for chapter 2, part 2, section 2.0505, the requested zoning district is in conformance with the comprehensive plan elements and their goals. Its impact upon the environment and natural resources, there are a significant amount of wetlands on this site, and those will be addressed during the technical site plan process for this, but they will have to comply with all Land Development Code standards. Impacts the economy of any affected area, so the impact to the economy is anticipated to be positive because of construction jobs during the work, plus the large commercial corner could be more enticing rather than split commercial. Impact upon necessary governmental services such as schools, sewage, potable water, drainage, fire, police protection, solid waste, and transportation. The impact on the necessary governmental services, including those mentioned, will be dealt with as a technical site plan, and any impact fees the developer is responsible will be paid for at that time. There are no changes in circumstances that would affect the area. Compatibility with proximate uses and development patterns. Again, there's an existing multifamily project right next door, and this is already zoned multifamily and commercial 3, again, just moving those around on the map. Whether it accomplishes a legitimate public purpose, subject property is located within the mixed use designation on the flume, and both of the existing zoning districts are permitted in that flume designation. Public participation, we did hold a neighborhood meeting on June 8th, and also Planning Board heard this item on June 15th and voted six to zero to recommend approval to city council. The Planning and Land Development Regulation Board determined the proposed rezoning of Seminole Point, application number 5064, is consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to city council to reconfigure the existing high-intensity commercial, COM3, and multifamily residential, MFR2, zoning districts on the property. The next steps would be a second reading in front of city council, and then we could see technical site plans. They perhaps could come before you, depending on how many units are there. And the applicant is present and has a presentation.
So let me ask city council first, do you have any questions for staff regarding the presentation? If you have a question for the applicant, we can roll that in as well.
I don't have a question for the staff.
Councilman Finelli.
Oh, I'm sorry. The only thing I have is, I don't know if you recall, last, last year, I recused myself from voting in this specific matter because I think that what the investor did to my wife wasn't proper, and therefore I asked to be recused from this, and again today, I'll ask to be recused again from any vote on this matter.
So is that an ex parte disclosure?
So I think what Vice Mayor Branquino is saying, that something occurred the last time.
That this matter came up.
This matter came up, but this is a new matter, number one. So if nothing's happened on this new matter, then it's not an ex parte communication. As far as recusal go, in quasi-judicial decisions, the statute states that if a member who's making that decision of a board or a council cannot make a fair decision because of something that has occurred, they can recuse themselves. This is a different provision, statute.
So are you unable or incapable of making a fair decision today?
I think I'm incapable of doing that decision, just based on what happened July 4th last year.
Yes, Ray.
Thank you.
Weekend.
I do want to know, it's a different owner group now too, as well.
Oh, okay.
Still, I, I don't know if I feel comfortable with voting.
Are there any questions of the applicant?
Nope. The only comment I would have is it actually makes more sense to me with the revised configuration of the rezoning, so I have no further questions.
No questions.
I will open this item up to, yes, sir.
Mayor, I'm sorry, the applicant does have a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have a presentation. I thought you were here for questions. Would you like to make the presentation?
I'll tell you what, we don't have anything that can really add to it. We have some pictures of the proposed plan, if we wanted to get into it, but if you would, I reserve comment till after public comment if necessary at this point in time.
Thank you. So I will open up this item for public comment at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to address city council on this resolution? Please step forward now. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment and come back to the dais. Additional questions? Is there any additional information?
I'll make the motion.
I just want to thank the applicant for having the, the presentation available for us, but I think that city staff did an excellent job last time they presented, so they covered all the bases in terms of our questions. So I do have a motion on the floor to approve.
Seconded.
And a second. Any additional discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Branquino is recusing himself. Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Finelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Counselor, if you would, move on and read the next resolution, number four, into the record, please.
Yes, this is agenda item number three, actually, the nuisance abatement initial assessment. A resolution by the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, relating to the provision of nuisance abatement within the incorporated area of the city, estimating the service costs of nuisance abatement services to be assessed, determining that certain real property will be specifically benefited thereby, establishing the method of assessing the service costs against the real property that will be specifically benefited thereby, directing the city manager to prepare or direct the preparation of a preliminary assessment role based on the methodology set forth herein, establishing a public hearing to consider imposition of the proposed assessments and the method of their collection, and directing the provision of notice in connection with, in connection therewith, providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, counselor. Mr. Tyner, you have a presentation?
We do have a presentation, if you want to go through.
Could you just summarize it for us quickly? There's some detail just to...
Yes. This is, good morning, Mayor, city council, Barbara Grossman, co-enforcement manager with the city of Palm Coast. You did see the presentation last week on July 12th at the workshop. This is a public hearing for the adoption of the initial nuisance abatement resolution. A few invoices have been paid since last Tuesday, and they have been removed from the list. The total amount has been updated to reflect these new payments. The required letter, as shown in the agenda item, will go out tomorrow, along with the advertisement appearing in the paper this week, providing for the required at least 20-day notification to those on the list for the next hearing and appeal process information. The public hearing for the final nuisance abatement resolution will be presented to city council at 9:00 a.m. on August 16th, 2022.
And I think we established this last time, that this is a mandatory annual approval that's required by city council.
Yes, it's required by statute to make these assessments on a yearly basis.
Any questions from city council members? Vice Mayor? No? Okay. With that, I'll open up the item for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this resolution at this time on the agenda? Please approach the podium. Seeing none, I'll close public comment, come back to the dais.
Who approved the nuisance abatement?
I have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please by, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Counselor, next item, please.
Yes, this is item number four on the agenda, for a resolution for the proposed maximum millage rate. A resolution of the city of Palm Coast, Flagler County, Florida, setting a proposed maximum ad valorem millage rate and tentative budget hearing date, time, and location for the city of Palm Coast, Flagler County, Florida, for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, and providing for an effective date.
Good morning, Mayor, city council. Gwen and I are here to present to you the general fund budget.
Helena, you need no introduction.
Helena Alves, your finance director, and to set the maximum millage rate proposal for fiscal year 2023. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Today, we will review the TRIM timeline, the 2023 fiscal year maximum millage rate proposal, as well as the general fund revenues, expenditures, and proposed personnel request. So again, this is a look at our TRIM timeline. On June 1st, the property appraiser provided the total assessed value of the non-exempt property. The city of Palm Coast received a preliminary estimate of $7.5 billion. On July 1st, the property appraiser certified the taxable value at $7.6 billion, which represents an increase of 19.7%. Of the 19.7%, approximately 5% or $315 million is attributable to new construction. Within 35 days of the value certification, the current year-proposed maximum millage rate must be set. Today, we will present the general fund budget with options to set the maximum millage. As a reminder, the assessed millage cannot be reduced, but it can be, it can be reduced at this point, it cannot be increased.
Right.
The first public hearing is scheduled for September 8th at 5:15 here at City Hall. Will be advertised on the TRIM notice that the property appraiser sends out. This hearing will set the tentative budget and tentative millage rate. The final public hearing is scheduled for September 21st at 5:15, also here at City Hall, to adopt the final budget and millage rate. The budget presented to you today is proposing the same millage rate that was adopted last year at 4.61. So this is an overview of the general fund positions. A total increase of 12 full-time new staff is being requested for fiscal year 23. As you can see, the general fund currently holds approximately 244 positions. The new positions have different starting dates based on budget and departmental needs. For the city manager's office, we are proposing the on budget and departmental needs. For the city manager's office, we are proposing the transfer of a senior staff assistant from the communications, as well as a transfer of the assistant city manager from the economic development department. Human Resources has requested a risk management coordinator and the transfer of the benefits coordinator that was split with the health insurance fund. Financial Services, a procurement coordinator. The communications department is requesting a communication specialist, as well as a part-time hours for the freelance communication staff. The fire department has requested two new firefighter EMTs and a fire inspector. Public Works Streets is requesting two new equipment operators. Community Development is requesting a community development technician. Parks and Recreation is requesting a transfer of .5 FTE from parks maintenance, as well as .5 FTE from the Aquatics Center. Two Parks and Recreation, along with a new aquatic safety specialist, and construction management engineering is requesting an architect. Helena will now review the general fund revenues and expenditures.
So this is a big picture view of the general fund revenues, overall change of approximately 3.5 million or 7%. Ad Valorem is the largest revenue source for the general fund. As Gwen mentioned earlier, the city's assessed value has increased by 19.7% with approximately 5% attributable to new construction. So assuming the same millage rate from last year of 4.61, we would generate 33.8 million in ad Valorem revenues, of which 33.3 would be to support the general fund. The amount attributable to new construction is approximately 1.4 million and the amount from current taxable properties is approximately 3.9 million. The next category includes the state revenues that the city receives. I checked this morning and we were still waiting for estimates from the state. However, based on the numbers already released, there is a moderate increase to the half-cent sales tax. There is a decrease to the state revenue sharing and we have not received the communication tax from the state, but we're estimated a moderate increase based on history for that type of revenue. As the state updates their revenues, we will update our presentations to council. You'll notice there's a decrease in appropriated fund balance from fiscal year 2022. The main reason is the $2.5 million transfer to capital projects for the maintenance operation complex. That was a one-time transfer in '22. It wouldn't carry to '23. So for fiscal year 2023, appropriated fund balance of $900,000. That is to fund the contingency that handles fluctuations between revenues and expenditures and, as we have in the past, and the value adjustment board contingency. There is also a capital equipment supplement. This is...
Helena, I'm sorry. Do you want to footnote the change in the reserve?
The change in reserve from the fiscal year 2021? Okay, so at the end of fiscal year 2021, the general fund reserve was at 26% and of that balance, we would be using $900,000 to fund 2023.
Okay, can I just ask a question regarding the state revenue sharing? Why do you think is that we basically losing $417,000?
So last year, they projected a significant increase for the city. This had always been a very conservative revenue, like it doesn't raise for more than 2% every year. But last year, there was a change in their formulas. So they estimated that increase for the city. So this year, they estimated a decrease. So we've reached out to the state and basically their explanation to us was that the team that calculated the estimates used a different method than the team that calculates the payments. But the team that calculates the payments is basically determining what we receive. So that decrease is reflected in those numbers.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the general fund expenditures. We will go into detail in the further slides. But as you can see here, our general fund total budget is approximately 52.7 million, an increase of 3.5 million from fiscal year '22 or 7%. Now, council has received the supporting worksheets with the detailed line items. The same worksheets were also placed on our website for the public under the fiscal year 2023 preparation tile. This is a summary of our administrative departments. The proposed budget increase is 22.1% from fiscal year 2022. The city council increase is mainly due to the changes adopted by councils, compensation and benefits. The increase in the city manager's budget is mainly due to the position transfers from the communications and marketing division and economic development. The city clerk's budget is decreasing mainly due to a decrease in estimated costs for the municipal code corporation as it relates to codification of ordinances. The city attorney's budget is increasing mainly due to the projected CPI increase to the city attorney's contract. Communications and marketing budget is increasing mainly due to the transfer of the senior staff assistant, offset by the request for a new communication specialist, as well as realignment of operating expenditures, along with an increase in freelance communication part-time hours. The human resources budget is increasing mainly due to the new position requested for the risk management coordinator and moving the benefits coordinator from the health insurance fund. In the past, that was split 60/40. Financial services budget is increasing mainly due to the request for the procurement coordinator. We will move on now to the other general fund budgets.
So the construction management and engineering budget has increased mainly due to a request for a new architect and the approved position from fiscal year 2022 that was budgeted for a portion of the fiscal year. The economic development budget has decreased by 15%, mainly due to moving the assistant city manager from this budget to the city manager budget. This budget includes council priorities to include $15,000 for the branding future as a regional destination for healthcare training, complemented by research and technology innovation, $75,000 for the conceptual master plan for the Metansas Parkway extension, delivering youth sports activity center feasibility study, and $3,000 for the multifaceted approach, including TPO, collaboration with city lobbyists, and direct communication with our legislative team to encourage the inclusion of Phase Two and Three of Olkings Road widening in the FDOT five-year work plan. The planning budget is increasing by 16.7%. The increase in personnel is due mainly to the personnel of the new community development technician. The operational increase is $150,000 for updating the city's comprehensive plan. The code enforcement budget is increasing by 10%. This budget includes dollars for demo and structure removal for abandoned construction property, also dollars for outreach to our residents proposing to take a proactive approach to facilitating educational opportunities on our codes and regulations. The fire department budget is increasing 16.6% due to the request for two new firefighter positions and one fire inspector, as well as the increased cost to replace two engines and an attack truck for $640,000 and an increase to the fuel budget. The law enforcement budget is increasing by 13.5% mainly due to the annual 5% contractual increase, as well as five additional deputies. Streets maintenance budget is increasing by 11% due to the request for two new equipment operators, as well as increased training for staff and new equipment. The operating budget also reflects increases due to the results of costs going up due to inflation. Next, the parks and recreation budgets. In total, these departments together have a budgeted increase of 11%. The increase is due mainly to increase in operating prices, including gas and chemicals. The department is also focusing on employee roadmaps and succession planning. The aquatics center budget is increasing mainly due to the request of the aquatic safety specialists. This is budgeted for the year-round operations. The tennis center budget is increasing mainly due to hosting the USTA tournament this year, which we have held in previous years. Palm Harbor Golf Club's budget is increasing mainly due to our fleet operations. We are replacing the remaining of our golf cart fleet and aging equipment. The parks maintenance budget is due to focus on employee development and roadmaps. As you can see, the non-departmental budget is decreasing by 45.7%. The decrease is mainly due to the fiscal year 2022 $2.5 million transfer for the maintenance operation complex. We are proposing a contingency for revenue and expenditure fluctuations, as well as value adjustment board, as we have done in the past. I will now turn the presentation over to Helena to go over the truth in millage.
So here is a look at how a dollar is split between the taxing authorities here in Flagler County. For every dollar in Ad Valorem taxes paid, Flagler County receives 44 cents, the school board 30 cents, the City of Palm Coast 23 cents, and other taxing districts split that 3 cent. This chart shows the history for the last several years for the millage rate, property values, receipts collected, and population. As you can see, we have been experiencing an increase in property values as well as population growth. The fiscal year '23 numbers are based on the property appraisers' July 1 valuation and assuming the same millage rate from fiscal year 2022 at 4.61. So this is a look at the millage rate options. As we said before, fiscal year 2022 adopted rate were 4.61. Your rollback rate is 4.0138. Your majority vote is 5.9033 and then your two-thirds vote is 6.4936. At this point, you will be approving the maximum millage rate. As Gwen mentioned earlier, it can be reduced as we move forward with the budget process, but it cannot be increased based beyond the rate that you established today. Your proposed fiscal year 2023, we are proposing at 4.6100. This presentation, as well as the detailed budget worksheets and previous presentations, are available to the public on our website. We will be back Tuesday, July 26th, to review proprietary funds budgets with council. This completes our presentation. We're open to questions?
So, city manager, you've been hand-in-hand with this process through strategic action planning and then the development of the numbers. Do you stand behind the cap? We're not voting on a millage rate today. We're voting on a ceiling for the millage rate. Do you stand behind that number?
I do. That's how we approach presenting a balanced budget today.
And we understand that we can reduce that millage rate at which meeting?
So we will come back to present to council all budgets on August 30th, so we can receive your feedback then. But you will first vote on your tentative on September 8th.
And city staff, city manager will be available for individual city council members to talk about detailed lines, looking for, you know, just from another perspective.
Absolutely. And our team will be as well.
Any comments or questions from City Council?
I just had a very good meeting with the city manager yesterday regarding this. And once again, I thank you for the job you did. And I'm 100% behind you when it comes to this millage rate.
Councilman?
Nope, no further questions.
Okay. Councilman Danko?
I know our city's been hurt by inflation, price of gas, just like our taxpayers, our stakeholders have. And I'll go ahead with this millage rate today, but I really want to urge everyone to start looking for some places to make some cuts because that's what folks are having to do at home. And things have just gotten out of control, unfortunately. I've gotten so many calls from people that just have urged me to push for the full rollback because they're hurting. They're on fixed incomes, a lot of our residents. So it's tough for everyone. It's tough for our city. It's tough for our residents. But I really seriously think we need to look for more cuts. I know we have must-have things. Our fire department is a must-have. Our police, our EMTs, our roads, all these things are must-have, our water. But there are things we don't necessarily need. And I would just urge everyone to start looking for where we can tighten our belts just a little bit more.
Councilman Finelli?
I do have a question for Helena. So with the millage rate that is proposed today, the 4.61, and then the rollback rate of 4.0 or about, can we land anywhere in between that number? Or is it one or the other? Could we be at 4.2, 4.3?
Well, to support the budget as presented and the requests as presented, you would have to be at the 4.6100. In order to adopt an amount lower than that, there would have to be cuts to the budget.
And I'm not talking about today. I know today we're setting a cap, but we could come back and set any rate.
Yes, you can always lower it. You cannot increase.
The arithmetic is up to a final vote by City Council now. Remember, as you identify, if you identify certain areas that you'd like to question more deeply, they may or not, may not impact other areas as well, which means that a full review of the numbers would need to happen each time. Just keep that in mind because not, many of these numbers are not independent of what else happens because of, you know, accounting overlays and, what's the term I'm thinking of, spreading some of the business costs throughout the city. Okay. Counselman? Nope. Okay, with that, I will open up the resolution to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on a maximum millage rate of 4.61, is it? No. What's the number?
4.6100.
Right, at this time. Seeing no one approach, I'll close public comment. Any last discussion by City Council? I would ask for, I have a motion to approve.
Seconded.
And I have a second. I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Brancino?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Finelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
We now move on to the next resolution. Counselor, if you would?
Yes, this is agenda item number five, the Gilbane Building Company Resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving the First Amendment to the contract with Gilbane Building Company to establish the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of the Southern Recreational Facility Project, formerly known as the Regional Racket Center, including approval for a contingency and related expenses, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. Thanks, Carl. You can go ahead.
Yes, good morning. I do, I have no new updates for you today. We inserted the contract amendment in there in your agenda packet. That would be, it's a draft. We'll process a final version upon adoption today. I'm willing to take any questions you may have.
I would just like to reiterate the comments that we made, that I made during our last workshop, that I appreciate the fact that we're not using, and these were echoed by other council members, that we're not using any general fund dollars and that these are coming from the CRA funds and the impact fees. And the overall shift to being able to use this space in a community manner, much like we have our community center with rentable areas on the second floor, I think seems really ideal. And I appreciate the visual walkthrough that you were able to provide during our workshop meeting that really provided a great basis for us to be able to look into the future and see what this project could potentially bring to the table. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll echo Councilman Clufus's comments.
Councilman Finelli, Vice Mayor? Very good. Then I'll open up this item for members of the public. Would anyone like to comment on this resolution at this time? Seeing no one, step forward. I'll close public comment. Last discussion, any other questions? Last discussion, any other questions? I would ask for a motion then for approval?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Seconded.
I did.
Okay. Second. Any other discussion? Let's approve this by call as well.
Vice Mayor Rinquino?
Yes.
Councilmember Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Finelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Counselor?
Yes, this is item number six on the agenda. A resolution for fleet purchases. Vermeer Southeast Duval Ford and Car Shop trailer sales. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, approving the purchase of one A CTX-160 Mini Skidsteer from Vermeer Southeast, one Ford F-250 from Duval Ford, and one landscape trailer from the Car Shop Trailer Sales, authorizing the city manager or designated to execute any necessary documents, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of council. Matt Mansel, you're director of Public Works. So this item is more of a flexibility requirement as we navigate the current economic challenges of acquiring equipment and vehicles. Two of these items, the Vermeer and the landscape trailer, were on the FY22 replacement list, and we have seen significant cost increases as we've discussed in the past. So, this agenda item provides for the additional funding to cover those cost increases for the Vermeer, of about $10,000 increase to that one, and about a $1,600 increase to the trailer, which carries that one over from being a non-asset item over the $5,000 threshold to now being an asset item at $6,100 and some change. The F-250 is a planned advancement. It's a replacement item that we are bringing to you on the FY23 replacement list, but we were notified of a vendor that there is an asset on ground at their facility right now that just became available. We are still waiting, I think nine months now, for most of our Super Duties that were ordered last year, so being able to flex and purchase this vehicle while it's available would give our staff the equipment they need and the replacement that is necessary for that current piece of equipment.
So, you answered my first question. I want to know if the vehicles you have in your budget is a chance some of them will not make it into this coming budget because of supply chain or whatever you want to call it, issues?
So, are you referring to the FY22 list previously?
Yeah.
So, correct. We do have a list that we're working with finance to update you on the ones that we're still waiting on.
Okay.
So we're tracking those line item by line item to make sure that we still know-
And I would ask also, since the supply chain or the other issues you're experiencing have driven up the costs, I would assume if you are eliminating any vehicles, the resale value of those would be looked at, because they are probably increasing as well, I would think, right?
They are. We have experienced some pretty well increases, you know, pretty drastic increases in our auction proceeds, and that does go back into our fleet replacement account that we utilize to buy the replacements out of. That is waning a little bit as the, as the economy is tightening a little bit, but we're still, you know, far outpacing what we had traditionally expected to receive for auction proceeds.
Good, okay. Any additional questions from Mr. Mansel?
Just a comment. You know that Public Works is dear to me, very dear to me.
Appreciate that.
You know it. And if we don't give you what you need slash request, then we're not helping you to do your job, and thank you for the good job you're doing out there.
Appreciate that.
Any other comments?
Just out of curiosity, what's a CTX-160?
So that's Mini Skidsteer. It's got a track on each side. We use it to move, like, large trees when we cut them down and move. It's got a grapple hook on the front of it.
Every exceptional city should have one.
How much is the F-250 going for now?
This F-250 is a purchase price of $52,316, and that is a significant increase we're seeing. However, this one is a '22 model, so it's a savings over the '23 model, which have increased by another $9,000 to $10,000 each.
I won't be buying one soon.
Okay. Any other comment? Go ahead.
My only question was, why Duval Ford? And I guess that's because that's where they have one right now? Is that a supply chain thing? Is there not one available locally?
So that's correct for this specific vehicle. We do purchase a lot of our Super Duties and F-150s from Duval Ford, because there are very large presence on the Sourcewell contract, but there are other dealers out there that offer that as well. This one is available now at Duval.
All right, if there's no other comments or questions, I will open this item up for the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this resolution? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Any last questions or discussion? Then I would ask for a motion. I have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And does the clerk have the count?
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is the consent agenda. There are two items. City council, anyone want to review any one of these individually? Hearing no one, I will open this item up to the public. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on the consent agenda this morning? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment. Are there, is there any additional discussion? Yes, go ahead.
Just a little thing. As you know, I use this more than everybody, because that's my only way home. And I want to ask Carl, please don't forget what I call the scrimmage lines to the, so that chalks-
You got a thumbs up from the back, we're good.
Thank you.
Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the, of a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Second, Councilman Danko. Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. Moving to the next item will be public participation. Are there any items on the, that were not covered previously on the agenda that the public would like to address city council with at this time? Seeing no one approach, I will close public comment. Public participation, I'm sorry. And discussion by city council of matters not on this morning's agenda. Councilman, anything you'd like to add to the meeting today?
Looking forward to Food Truck Tuesday tonight, right? Yes.
Very good. All right.
I just have to add that I would like to ask my colleagues for the month of August if I could be allowed to attend the meetings via Zoom, as I'm going to be in two different countries, in Switzerland and Portugal, with family matters, actually, family reunions, if that was a-
Give me a shake of the head, we have consensus?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, very good.
And I think this is probably time to tell, you know, Councilman Finelli, from the bottom of my heart, I know what going through a lot of this, so good luck in Europe. And I mean it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Oh, we now have a discussion by city attorney. Do you have anything this morning?
I have nothing.
And city manager?
Yes, I have one item in your packet. You'll see an administrative item under city manager, and that's for emergency and sole source. If you have any questions, that would be the time to ask them now.
Gentlemen, any questions? I think you were pretty thorough. It's pretty self-explanatory. I don't have any questions. No, good, very good.
The motion put through.
Do we, wait one second. Do we have any very exciting events coming up?
Well, thank you for announcing the Food Truck Tuesdays. We're looking forward to that tonight, and someone has to make sure they're responsible for the weather for us.
Because one of our, one of our owners under the weather. I just want to make sure that you are her voice today.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate that, and best wishes, council member.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn, a second?
Seconded.
Somebody, second, all in favor?
Aye.